Good afternoon, Board members, college staff, visitors. The time is 6:01 on this, the, what is today? The fourteenth day of October 2021, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Delgado, will you say the prayer?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, for our faculty, for our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Grant us the insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Keep us from short-sightedness and pettiness, and help us to make the decisions that are good for all of those and guard us from the blind self-interest. Your Lord, grant us the humility to what we seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Judge, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ramos, could you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J.D. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Mahrez?
Absent.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Carranza?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Absent.
Karina Lisondo?
Present.
Tita Cantubela?
Absent.
Madam President, you have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Do we have any public testimony?
No.
Okay, thank you. Recognitions, communications, and introduction of personnel. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina?
Yes, thank you, Boards. Dr. Tijerina, interim president, for the record. I wanted tonight to introduce interim dean of South Campus, Ms. Beatriz Gutierrez. She was here the last time, but unfortunately, we didn't recognize her, and tonight, she's at the South Campus with a partnership with the City of Laredo. So hopefully, at the next board, I'll be able to recognize her formally, but I just wanted, I had sent an email or notification about her recent appointment as we're opening up the position for the dean of South Campus, but Beatriz has done a great job, so I just wanted to formally recognize her.
Okay, thank you. Item number five, discussion and possible election. 5A, approval of the spring 2022 enrollment incentive. Dr. Fred Solis. Let the record show, Tita Velasquez is present.
Receiving Madam President, Board members. Board members, colleagues, and visitors. This evening, Madam President, we're bringing in the agenda item to request for the board to approve a tuition fee waiver that would be applied to the spring 2022 semester. As you know, this fall semester, we had a very similar program that yielded close to $3.7 million in savings and tuition for our students, and so we're asking for the spring semester to do the same. Again, just like in the fall, the expense would be covered through our Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
So I have a motion from Judge Martinez. Do I have a second? Second from Karina Lisondo. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Solis. That will make a difference in our students coming back. Thank you, appreciate it. Number six, information items. 6A, selected committee for review of the request for qualifications for internal architect. Dr. Maricela Rodriguez Tijerina?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Tijerina, for the record. I just wanted to let the board know that we do have proposals, and what I'm going to appoint is the building committee to vote on the internal architects, as well as two employees, which will be Mr. Orlando Cepeda and Mr. Alud at the South Campus, and the reason for those two is because this internal architect is going to be dealing with any projects of Laredo College other than Phase III bond construction. So we will present those at the building committee, and then rank them, and then bring it to the regular board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show Esteban Rangel is present.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So before we go to the number seven, executive session, we have Cliff Killam, we have Dr. Ortiz, present here to go ahead and speak to us about the tax increment reinvestment zone as the coves at Winfield. Let the record show Cynthia Mahrez is present.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I call our attorney. Yes, sir.
Madam President and board members, that would, discussion would fall under item 8A, I believe, because under items 7A and 7B, we would not be able to call those to the table. That would be discussions involved.
So it'll be after the executive session?
And you can move up item 8A now.
I'd like to make that motion, Madam Chair. I think it's important that before we go into executive session, that we have a presentation from Mr. Killam and any additional information related to the project that they have in mind before we get into executive session.
So I have a motion. I have a second from Ms. Ramos. Any discussion?
Yes.
No, already have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now, Mr. Killam can come in and present. Rusty?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Killam, it's all yours.
Honorable Madam Chair and honorable Laredo College Board members, it's a pleasure to speak before you all. Would like to make a, we brought a presentation that we can speak to, and we can also answer any questions that you all may have. I think we have a presentation loaded on here, let me just. If you can help me with that, please. Is it here? Sure. That's the. Can we have it on? I don't see it on there. Okay. Who is that, Mr. Iglesias? Anyone to move? Just bear with us for a moment, please. I think while we're waiting, I can speak to, is it working or no? Okay. I can speak here if you'd like. So, no. We appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all. As you may know, we've been working on this project for quite a long time. We appreciate the opportunity to present this before you. The project is called The Coves of Winfield. It's a thousand, approximately 1,000 acres along Loop 20 in front of Shiloh. And we have, we've entitled this project, or this presentation, Growing Laredo Together. We're moving, you know, we'd like to move forward with this tax increment financing. It's a public-private partnership, and as you know, there would be four different participants in this project. It would be ourselves as a developer, as well as the three jurisdictions, the City of Laredo, the Webb County, and if we're able to earn your support, Laredo College. Currently, as you may know, the city and the county have supported the project. Here's the 1,027 acres, this is the location. Let's see here, the project is, we've tried to embrace the comprehensive plan that the City of Laredo has put together as part of that. We've put in different hike and bike trails within the project. The green circle that you see there is a two-mile ring, 40 feet wide, meant for, again, for walking, that creates connectivity throughout the project. As you can see there, there's a town center project which is going to have more density. And then also, as part of the project, we have a location for the Laredo College, tentatively, and there is funds for a building to be allocated. Of course, that's at your all's discretion if you'd like to do something there or somewhere else. The project itself is going to create over a billion dollars' worth of taxable assessed value over a 30-year period. The, as part, these are some of the different elements of the project. We're going to have approximately 1,800 homes, about 900 apartment units, about 650,000 square feet of retail, 100 units of hotel, and we'll have lots of green space in there. The project embraces a lot of the natural vegetation that we have in Laredo. The homes are situated so that they all have view corridors. We've, the project is called The Coves of Winfield, and the reason why it's called Coves is because we're using a coving design. We've really tried to do something unique and special for our community. There's a gentleman named Rick Harrison who has pioneered this concept. It's, it will be, if we're able to move this forward, it'll be new for Laredo, but Mr. Harrison has done these projects all over the world and very successfully. I think it's going to be something really, really unique to our community. This is sort of gives you a rendering of what that looks like. In terms of the project costs right now, $1.6 million is allocated for a Laredo College building. Again, it's at your discretion of what you would like to do there, when you would like to do it there, as well as if you would like to do something somewhere else. If you would like to do something somewhere else, what I, we've been advised of is that it needs to be a place of public assembly. As long as it meets that criteria, you are able to locate that building anywhere you would like, and we're here to help support and facilitate whatever the Laredo College Board members would like to see. In addition, there's approximately $75 million in terms of infrastructure, that's water, water lines, sewer lines, roadways. And then in addition, there's city administrative costs to help with administering the project over the 30 years. Currently, the current value of the zone, of the area, is approximately $11 million. And so with this, if we're, again, if we're able to earn your all's support tonight, over that 30-year period, we're able to create a billion dollars in tax base. The contributions beforehand, I'm proud to say that we were able to earn the support previously of the, of the city, of the county, and of the Laredo College prior. The program has changed a little bit, and in terms of the college's participation, the primary change is that the participation amount is decreasing from 60% to 40%, and that means that the college is actually retaining more revenues than previous, previously. And this is due to negotiations that we had with the city. Initially with the city, there were other aspects, they were, they were going to be getting a rec center, there was going to be a program for down payment assistance for homes, and there were a few other items on there. The city management said, you know, we want to remove those items, simplify the project, but as part of that, we want to reduce the amount of participation, and we thought the most equitable thing to do was for that to change for all the participants. So we didn't really use that as a point of negotiation in it all, we just said, you know, we think the fair thing to do is to come back and present to you all, try to earn your support once again, and to reduce that participation from 60% down to 40%. Again, the amount of money's being contributed, City of Laredo's putting in approximately 33 million, Webb County is putting in 26 and a half million, and Laredo College is putting in approximately 18 million. Again, as I mentioned, some of the different changes, it's still a 30-year term, the participation rate has been reduced. In that interim, there was a slight increase in the base value from 9.7 million to 10.9 million, and MNO collective revenue by college has increased from 15 to 25.8 million, and Laredo College building is the same, we're honoring that at 1.8 acres. As you can see here in this projection, we project over, you know, if we're able to earn your support, we're able to create $1 billion of assessed tax value over the 30-year period. If we're not able to earn your support, then the property, you know, we're estimating will increase to about $70 million roughly. Here you can see, with, with supporting this project, the college is able to retain approximately $38 million and will contribute approximately $17 million. And if we're not able to earn your support at the current rate, the amount of tax revenue generated for the college over that 30-year period is approximately $4 million. Again, here's the Laredo College North Building, this is something that is proposed. Of course, again, it is up to, it's at your discretion of what you would, what you would all like to do and the administration would like to do, but this is something that is, was initially proposed, but again, we're here to support whatever you all would like to see happen, whether it be here or somewhere else. Here is a rendering that was done previously. This is the town center concept, and also the location of the, of the north, potential north campus. But as you can see here, we're going to, it's going to have higher density, and it's, we're really trying to embrace the comprehensive plan. We actually worked with Able City and the architects and land planners there to help to further embrace certain elements of the comprehensive plan. So we modified aspects of the project to help create more connectivity and higher density, and this is meant to be a sort of a pilot project. This will be a first of its kind within our community. And if we are, we're here today to hopefully earn your support, and so I'm happy to, and I'm here with one of my colleagues, Dr. Orlando Ortiz, as well as our legal counsel, Myron Dornick, and we're here to answer any questions that you may or may not have, and anything that you, anything we can do to help address any, any questions, we're more than happy to do that. And again, we're, if we're asking for your support, and then if you do choose to support this project at a later point in time, you know, you would, we would request that you would need to consider appointing a board member to the TERs board, but we can do it one step at a time. So appreciate your consideration. I know that we've had the opportunity to speak with many, with all of you all, and on different, you know, one-on-one conversations and workshops, and we really appreciate the opportunity and hope that we can earn your, earn your support tonight. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Judge Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that the, this board unanimously approved on the previous administration 100% of this particular project. It's my, however, one of the questions that I do have in the site, is that site right next to the, to the bubble of Loop? In other words, where we will have, the college will have a strong identity, so to speak, is that, that particular location, is that by the Loop? Just as a question?
Yes, sir, it is. I guess it's, there's a little bit of, I believe, retail, am I correct? Yeah, there's a little bit of retail in front of it, but it is right by the Loop, and this is, it's by the major, you know, one of the major arterials coming into the project.
Which would be an ideal location, so to speak, because it will have strong presence in the north side of Laredo, which at the present time, we do not have any, any presence whatsoever. And I certainly would, you know, feel that, that on previous locations, members of the board have addressed the possibility of having presence in the north side, as, of course, we do have presence now on the south side of Laredo, and this would at least have some type of identity that Laredo College would have, and particularly more so where there will be quite a bit of activity going past it through, based on, on the, right next to the Loop. That in itself also will, will have strong identity, ident, with, with the college and of course, the drive-by situation of the community. In addition to the fact that, like you just said, Mr. Killam, the, the development there is certainly a very innovative development that is actually, will have a strong, in our opinion, I think, will, will have strong identity, and also quite a bit of interest by, by the community. I wouldn't doubt it if you will have, at the beginning, a tremendous amount of traffic of residents that just, just being interested in looking at the manner in which that development is, is being, being done within that, that site. So I, in my, as far as I'm concerned, that would really be a tremendous asset for, for Laredo College. That's my, my feeling.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Really quick, Mr. Killam, you mentioned that the college would be getting $1.6 million. Is that just in brick and mortar?
That is correct.
Okay, so what's the value of, what, it's 1.8 acres?
Yes, sir.
And what's the value of that?
You know, we don't have a specific value that we've attributed to that at the, at the moment, but I mean, I would say I can, we can give an approximation if you'd like. Get my calculator out here.
I mean, just a rough number, just to, just to know, so, because you mentioned it's 1.8 acres, so I'm just wondering, it's the, it's the $1.6 million?
It's, it's, you know, say an approximately $600,000, $700,000, something like that.
And is that at the, is that value at what it is right now, or what you're predicting to be at 30 years from now?
I'm, that's what I would assume it would be once it is platted and entitled and so forth, so not what it is today, but, you know, if you were to proceed and support the project and we were to get the property sort of ready for development, and we have all the, you know, city approvals and so forth, at that point in time, as a, as sort of a platted lot, it would, that would be the.
From 600,000 to 700,000?
Yes, yes.
On top of the 1.6?
Correct.
And you mentioned, you mentioned several times, if we would want it there, what do you mean by that?
Well, you, you have the ability to place the building there if you would like, but if for some reason, the administration and the board would like to use those funds elsewhere, you do have the ability to do that. So you could put, use those funds outside of the zone in your campus here, or your South Campus, or technically, you know, anywhere within the City of Laredo. But the qualifications in order to do that would be that the, the facility would need to be a public place of assembly. That, that would be the definite, the criterion, the legal criterion necessary in order to do something different.
And, and has that been spoken by the two legal counsel? Ours and yours?
I believe so, but I'll let them.
There's been very limited communication about that, but we can visit about that when we.
My, my next question is, you speaking on if we would want it there or not, is, my next question is, it's the, it's the 1.6 million, and if for whatever reason, we would want it in the South Campus, in the main campus, is it the 1.6 plus the 6, 6 to 700,000 dollars on top of that, or is it just the 1.6?
So.
Because we need to value the acreage as well, right?
Yeah, correct, and, and that's a great question, and I've, I, we discussed that internally with our legal advisor, if, if that were, if that was, you know, one scenario, and what, what we've been advised of is that what we could do is, we probably would not be able to add additional funds to what's been allocated, but we could, you could still retain that site, and if you wanted to keep that site for the future, you could, and if the college decided they wanted to sell that site, they could sell that site and effectively get those funds themselves.
And if we would want to sell that, would we have to wait after the 30 years, or can we do it within the 30 years?
You could, you could sell it, you know, as soon as it's ready, ready to be sold, so.
And platted.
Correct. So once we have it ready to go, and then with all the water and sewer and so forth, if you chose to sell it, you could sell it. If you chose to keep it and sit on it for, you know, use the 1.6 billion for some, a facility somewhere else, and you could still keep the location for a future use.
Now, would we be obligated to use those six, or whatever the value that we would get, legal counsel, whatever value we would get on, on that property, would we be locked in to be able to use it just for something, or for, for a certain specific thing being that it was used in, in a certain way as like a TERS? Would you know that?
If I, if I may, that, there's been no discussions between me and the counsel for the, you know, Killam family about that, so I think, you know, there may or may not be a restriction about how that property could be used, but that would be something we'd have to discuss with them, or perhaps they can make some comments about that now.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Myron Dornick, I can address that in terms of the legal restrictions for the TERs. So the TERs, you know, the TERs includes the dollars for the building, and the land would be given to facilitate that building. If the college wants to change its plans for that building after it's donated to them, then there's no restriction on it other than whatever the college wants to do, they can sell it, they can do whatever they want with that land.
Yeah, but my question is, are we locked in to use the fund, the, the monies that we would get from the selling of that funding, would it be just for something in particular that we could be?
No.
We could use for whatever?
Yeah, what, any college purpose that you have.
Interesting, thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Thank you, Mr. Killam.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dornick. Thank you, appreciate it. So now I can go to the next item? 7B is closed session consultation with the college district's attorney concerning retaining special legal counsel for pending Title IX complaints pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Do I have a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
So I have a motion by Mr. Delgado, I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? So, we're going to go ahead, motion pass, all in favor?
Aye.
So motion passes executive session at this time, it is...
6:32.
Going to recommend we go into executive session, and the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss agenda items. Thank you.
7:52.
7:52, and the board took no action in executive session. We will take appropriate action on items if necessary discussed in closed session. So the, the next item that we have is discussion on possible action, is 8A, discussion on possible action regarding participating in the city of Laredo tax increment reinvesting zone, TERS number two, also known as The Coves at Winfield.
Madam Chair, may I?
Chair recognizes Mr. Vanghel.
Thank you. I motion to approve item 8A pursuant that legal counsel modifies or meets with legal counsel, with their legal counsel, and makes the proper modifications to the contract?
So I have a, a motion, and I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you raise your hands to make sure we have?
One, two.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Motion passes.
Against?
Oh, any against? Sorry, I missed it. So we have three.
Yes, sir.
You decide.
You voted in favor.
Oh, I know it. You keep raising your hand.
For clarification, do you vote?
You're four, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have Judge Martinez, Mr. Vanghel, Mr. Delgado, Ms. Ramos, Ms. Elizondo, and Dr. Carranza, four. And against, I have Ms. Amares, Ms. Bella, and myself. Thank you. Okay, now, motion passes. Sorry, guys. Sorry, Rusty.
Rusty's raising his hand already. See what you did to Rusty?
The next item, 8B, is retain special legal counsel for pending Title IX complaints. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item...
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ramos.
Do we have to indicate as, as discussed in executive session, correct? Mr. Mayor?
You get motion to approve item 8B as discussed in executive...
Yes.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Vanghel. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is, the next meeting date is Thursday, October 28th at 6:00 PM. That will be our regular Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A motion by Dr. Carranza, and a second by Mrs. Ramos. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.